Good evening. I want to welcome you and call order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, October 7th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there's a quorum of board members present. Myself, Joel Odom, Mrs. Lyanna Martinez, Mr. Jason Savoda, Ms. Bonner Reed, Mr. Steven Schadrock, Mr. Marshall Flear, and Mr. Craig Moose. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Let's stand together. Mr. Moose will now lead some prayer, followed by Mr. Schadrock leading the prayers.
Heavenly Father, we come together today with assured purpose to serve our students, educators, and community. Grant us with wisdom to make thoughtful decisions. Help us listen to one another with open hearts and minds. Please watch over us as we travel to and from events. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Now, my pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S., one state under God, one and indivisible.
Now, Mr. Savoda will recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, confidence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
I will now recite our FISD goals. The FISD goals are this: Excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service, and community engagement, and strategic resource management. Now, we will recite our FISD core beliefs. At FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
We believe families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, applicable individuals for our student center.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and Central Administration leads with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
All right, now, Ms. Reed will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governor indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interest of the district as a whole. This month, for the code of ethics, we are highlighting integrity of character. I will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will be constantly upholding all applicable laws, rules, policy, and government procedures. I will not disclose information on that is confidential by law or that was needlessly harmed to the district if disclosed. Our good governor indicator for the month is the board has a code of ethics for itself and promote ethical behavior in the governance structure throughout the organization and interaction with workforce, vendors, and stakeholders.
We will now have some recognitions for the Florisville ISD's students and teacher of the month. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, board members, I'd like to call up Diana Wagner, Principal at our Florisville Early Childhood Center for our recognition of Teacher of the Month. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Come right over there.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom and the board. I am Mrs. Wagner, and I have the privilege of presenting the Florisville Early Childhood Teacher of our Early Childhood Center, Mrs. Diana Conley. Mrs. Conley, she started her career as a substitute teacher. She spent three years as a Florisville ISD aide, two and a half years working at the Bear County Juvenile Justice Academy, three years at Florisville Elementary and Third Grade Math, ten years at Florisville North Elementary doing second grade math, reading, and self-contained, and four years at Florisville North, and she's currently on her second year here at the ECC. Ms. Conley told us about how she decided to get her degree later in life. She was 40, she just told me that outside, to be exact, after working in the corporate world. She told us a little story that she saw her baby leaving on the school bus one day and decided, "I don't want to do that. I want to be at the school where my baby is," and so she went back and got her degree, and I think that's pretty cool. Ms. Conley once told me that she loves teaching pre-K because it keeps her feeling very young. She says every day she has to dance, skip, run, chase, and cuddle, all of her littles. So she also mentioned that she wished she would have known about pre-K years ago because then she would have felt younger and been younger many years ago. I totally love working with Mrs. Conley. She knows everybody, and everybody knows her. She's extremely respectful. She's very polite. She follows the rules, and she stays in her lane, right, Miss Conley?
She has remind me.
I always have to tell my kids, "There you go. You're moving over. Get over. Get back. Get back." She tells me she's still working on this. I appreciate her and I admire her because she's always positive. She may not agree with what is being asked of her, but she always complies, and she speaks very well of others. I'm very proud of her, and I'm so happy to announce her as our Florisville Early Childhood Teacher of the Month, Mrs. Conley.
Mrs. Conley, I think that you were singing and skipping way before you became a pre-K teacher. I've known you since, I remember when you were studying and I first started teaching here in the district. You've always had that energy and enthusiasm, you know, you just carry that with you everywhere you go. We appreciate that playful spirit that you bring to the classroom, and I know that's what makes your students thrive. We're very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
You want to put that up here?
Yes, I think. I don't see what's free. There you go. Uh, Ms. Martinez? There you go. One, two. One more. One, two.
I can get right in a minute.
Okay. I didn't want to make everybody wait longer. And I'm the baby that made her decide to become a teacher.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm retiring. I'm not going to let her go. My health. Thank you, sir.
Board members, next up from South Elementary, Dr. Monica Sluter.
How are you?
Good evening, President Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and Board of Trustees. Florisville South Elementary Teacher of the Month of October is Ms. Stephanie Gilchrist. Ms. Gilchrist graduated from Texas A&amp;M University with a degree in interdisciplinary studies with an emphasis in early childhood education. She also attended Our Lady of Light University, where she earned her master's in curriculum and instruction, eventually becoming a certified master's technology teacher. Her certifications include general education EC-6, master technology teacher, she's ESL certified, and GT certified. Ms. Gilchrist is married to Elton Gilchrist, who teaches high school math in Stockdale. They have a son named Dario, who is 16 years old and a junior at our high school. He enjoys football, talking about anything car and truck-related, and fishing. Their daughter Emily is 11. She is a sixth grader at FMS, and Emily enjoys volleyball, being social, she'll talk to anybody, and her dog Trippy. On the weekends, Ms. Gilchrist enjoys doing things with her family, whether it's going to her kids' activities or taking little road trips. Ms. Gilchrist is currently teaching second grade for us and has experiences in pre-K and fourth grade. Ms. Gilchrist says second grade is her favorite because they are still little and so independent. When asked what her favorite thing was about teaching, she says she has two. She loves to see the growth in the child, and when they're struggling with a concept, they finally get it. Ms. Gilchrist says the look on their faces and confidence is what I love to see. She says some people jump out of airplanes for the rush of excitement. I teach children. Ms. Gilchrist says she has always wanted to be a teacher. In fact, she became a teacher because she loved her kindergarten teacher so much she wanted to be just like her kindergarten teacher and teach like her kindergarten teacher taught her. One of her students says Ms. Gilley is nice, smart, helpful, positive, pretty, and teaches us in cool ways. Ms. Gilchrist, thank you for all you do, and congratulations on being selected Florisville South Teacher of the Month of October. Next to me, I have Destiny Torres. She is a fifth grader at Florisville South and our October Female Student of the Month. Destiny is the daughter of Dahlia Arrelo, who teaches kindergarten at our campus, and Juan Torres. Destiny has two brothers named Jose and Emmanuel, who are ages 18 and 17 years old. She says her brothers are fun. She enjoys it when they go pick up food and bring it back to the house so they can play board games. Her favorite game is called "What Do You Mean?" because it makes her laugh. Destiny has gone to FSE since she was in pre-K, so she has been there for six years. She enjoys drawing and hopes to be an artist when she grows up. Her favorite subject is math because she thinks it's easy and interesting. Destiny has excellent grades and is on the AB honor roll list and has perfect attendance so far this school year. Her extracurricular activities include UIL listening skills. In fact, she competed this Saturday at our campus competition and placed fourth in her event, which will advance her to our district competition in December. Destiny and her mom attend football and soccer games on the weekends to support all of her mom's former and current students. Destiny's favorite holiday is Christmas. She likes Christmas because she likes giving presents. She also gets a lot of family time. They have family come from Colleen and from the border in order to celebrate Christmas. Congratulations, Destiny and her family. Our male October Student of the Month is Nicholas Satello. He goes by Nico. He is also a fifth grader at Florisville South. He is the son of Jennifer Satello. Nico has a little brother named Nathaniel, and Nathaniel is seven. Nico says his brother likes to do things that he likes to do, like Mortal Kombat. He says he likes that his little brother has different opinions, too. Nico says something that is very special to him is his house because he's made a lot of special memories there, including when his brother was born. Nico has attended FSE since pre-K, and he has been with us all six years. Nico says he's looking forward to middle school. He is most excited about joining the band and learning a new instrument. He's thinking about the trumpet and the drums. When asked what his future plans were, he says he would like to be a video game designer or a teacher when he grows up. He says that teaching looks really fun. He says he'd like to be a teacher at South. That way, when his friends' kids come through car line, they'll recognize him when they drop a map at school. Nico has excellent grades and is on the AB honor roll. His favorite subject is math. He thinks it's easy, and he cannot wait to learn about pi and MC squared. He's also looking forward to the challenges of letters in math, and at this point in our conversation, we proceeded to learn one and two-step equations in my office on the whiteboard. His extracurricular activities that he enjoys is video games at home. He enjoys the challenges of each game, the fact that he can choose and create his own story, and Minecraft, he gets to build stuff. And when he becomes a teacher, he wants to do things just like that in his classroom: challenge kids and allow kids to be creative. His favorite holiday is Halloween. He's going to dress as a Mortal Kombat character and can't wait to go trick-or-treating with his Aunt Abby. When I asked Nico if he had any final thing to say, he would like for his mother to know that he believes his mother does a great job in taking care of him and his little brother and wants to say thank you to mom because she is the reason he is so successful at school. Mom uses what little time she has after work to help Nico get better at math and reading and wants to thank her for spending her time with him and his brother.
Mrs. Gilchrist, we appreciate everything that you do to connect with your students. We appreciate the energy that you bring into the classroom. I know that's what pushes them to pass through the struggles that they encounter, and we're so thankful that you're sharing your talents with us. Congratulations. Destiny, you shine inside the classroom and outside the classroom. I love how you balance. You've got the great grades, and you're participating in UIL, but you also love that family time. You cherish that. You're balancing your schoolwork with your family time, and that's awesome. You're setting a great example for everyone, you know? Keep up with your commitment. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. And Nico, we're very proud of your hard work and your dedication also. I love that you want to be a teacher. We really hope that you will teach and come back and be here with us one day, but we want you to keep chasing your dreams also. If you want to be a video game designer, I think that's awesome, having that balance with keeping up those excellent grades, but also knowing that, hey, there's a time to play, too. And we also, I just think it's amazing the love you that you have for your mama. Congratulations. We're proud of you.
All right, if you'd like to be, if you would like to leave our joyous occasion, you can do so, but we thank you for coming and appreciate all that you give to our community and to our students.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Congratulations.
All right, if you'd like to be, if you would like to leave our joyous occasion, you can do so, but we thank you for coming and appreciate all that you give to our community and to our students.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
All right, if you'd like to be, if you would like to leave our joyous occasion, you can do so, but we thank you for coming and appreciate all that you give to our community and to our students.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess you have no need to. Say nothing. It's not a question. Thank you. Congratulations. I'm glad you're here.
It was still available. It was wonderful.
Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments? We'll now continue with our reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will now give the superintendent. Thank Dr. Odom. I do want to have a couple more recognitions if we can real quick. October 9th, which is later this week, Texas Education Human Resources Day. So where's Ms. Stonich at? Stand up, Ms. Stonich. Thank you, Ms. Stonich and her department. Governor Abbott has designated October 9th as HR Appreciation Day. We want to take a minute to recognize her and her staff for all the hard work that they do. They do an outstanding job, not only just keeping our, physical, all of our classes full and people hired, which is a full-time job in and of itself. They're also dealing with a lot of different employees and a lot of personal situations. They're talking to people about benefits all the time, along with representing the district. Ms. Stonich already went to the job fair last week, in fact, and so she and her department are truly the face of the district out there, so thank you, Ms. Stonich, very much for that. Also, principals, if you don't mind standing up. October, don't stand up real fast. October is National Principals Month, so we want to take a minute just to say thank you to all of our principals. Yes, give them a hand. They do an outstanding job, and it's a difficult position to be in, especially in this day and age, whenever you're really having to balance the instruction in the classroom, being that instructional leader, along with the discipline and the culture and everything else that goes along with the students. They truly have to be great leaders, what they do and in their building, so thank you all very much and congratulations on National Principals Month. So, thank you. Couple other things. We recently finalized an agreement to provide a ConocoPhillips Scholarship Fund. They have not finalized the amount yet because it's based on a recent golf tournament that ConocoPhillips put on, but we have finalized the agreement, and so we will be able to provide scholarships for the next 10 years. Don't know the exact amount, but that'll be really phenomenal for our community and our students, so thanks to ConocoPhillips. Whenever we do get more information with that, we'll be pushing that out through social media and otherwise to recognize them for their donation. The Education Foundation Gold Buckle Gala was last month, just a couple weeks ago. It was great to see our community coming out and really stepping up for our teachers and our students to fill some of the gaps. They provide teacher grants for innovative teaching in the classroom, and that really goes a long way. There's some things that, as a district, you know, we were able to meet needs, but we're not able to really push it and go above and beyond. Those grants go a long way to doing that. I know that they have, last number I heard was over $86,000 in one evening. Don't know if that's final number yet, but they are, it was really great to see, and our community once again opens up their wallets and really comes out to support our educators. I do want to thank the Education Foundation Board for all the time and effort they put into a great evening. There were about, what was it, 50 tables sold out at eight apiece, so it's really a big crowd, and it's not easy to do. To all the spouses as well for being out there to decorate, Mr. Moose, we appreciate that. I'd like to take just a minute, if I can, to introduce a couple of new police officers we have. Tima, if you don't mind standing up there, Officer King. Officer King's the one standing. Tima's the one.
Officer, he minds well.
Our new K-9 officer, Tima, has joined our force just this past month, already making the rounds and building relationships with kids. She's already been the talk of the district, or at least the high school campus, that's for sure. Already made a couple of things, have found a few things that are hopefully making a difference in our campus and what our students do. She's already starting to make that impact. We want to take a minute to thank Representative Guian for putting us in contact with donors that were able to cover the cost of the training of the dog to get the dog here, so we want to thank all of our donors for that and Representative Guian for putting us in contact with that. As a result of having Tima onboard, we're actually going to be saving some expenses on contracting some services out. Some of our drug search, we've had dogs that come out every year, or actually every month for the past few years, and that's been a cost to the district, and now with this K-9 unit, we won't have to do that. Also, want to take a minute, if you don't mind, Officer Flores, wave him up. Everyone, Officer Flores is new to Florisville ISD, just started last week.
Yes, sir.
Coming from Kennedy, and so we want to take an opportunity to welcome him. He's currently at the middle school, but we do have one other position that we now have an officer at every campus. We've been supported by the city since the beginning of school, but we now have an officer at every campus. We're actually getting that second officer at the high school coming onboard, hopefully within the next month. But welcome aboard, Officer Flores. We thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
All across the state and across the San Antonio area, school districts have been experiencing multiple threats. They've been receiving multiple threats. Some of these are direct, others are indirect. As a district, we take each one of these potential threats seriously until determined otherwise. I want to make sure I'm communicating that with the board as well as our community. We do not take these things lightly. Administrators work with law enforcement to investigate any incident regardless of day or night. You can ask some of our principals about that. They work late into the evening looking into some of these things whenever we get word of them. We are prepared to take any action to adjust our security measures if needed, so we're able to take some adjustments. We've got some things that we're able to do, put into place if we need to, just to add some extra layer of security. But I really want to take an opportunity and encourage everyone, if you see something, say something. That's what it really comes down to in these things. Yes, we do investigate all of those. Not all of them turn out to be credible. Most of them do not, which is a good thing, but nonetheless, if you don't report it, we don't have the opportunity to investigate it. So we need to make sure everybody knows, staff, students, community members, if you see something, say something. The First Facilities Task Force meeting was last month. We had approximately 38 people that were in attendance for that. The discussion was great to hear, and there was a lot of support for the master facility plan, so board members just know that they did have a lot of positive things to say about the plan itself. The meeting focused on reviewing the plan, since many of those that were participating were not in the development of it, and then a brief discussions had about our projects that were presented. The second meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 30th, at 6:00 PM at Florisville Middle School Cafeteria. The public is once again welcome to attend. You do not have to attend the first one in order to attend the second one, so you can step in at any time. We'll kind of have a little recap of the first one to start off the meeting that night. Information is available on the website as well as our RSVP form, and then we'll also be pushing this information out through social media, the newspaper, website, all the other avenues that we have. So really want to encourage people to be a part of that process. It is important, and it's been good conversation. I know we had a couple of board members that were there. As board members, you're welcome to attend as well. We just can't all sit at the same table. You've got to make sure we're spread out for the walking quorum, but as active community members, we want to make sure that you're involved in this as well. We'll be scheduling a policy committee review in the upcoming weeks. We need to look at policy FNCE local. This policy addresses use of personal communication, telecommunication devices while at schools, specifically those that are able to listen in to conversations remotely. We want to make sure we're looking at every student's privacy whenever it comes to that, so our policy committee will be coming, will be meeting in the coming months so that we can make sure we review that and put that on the future agenda. The November agenda will include items regarding the election, including canvassing the election results, swearing in new board members, reorganizing the board, and approving the board operating procedures. In your folder, you should have a copy of the board operating procedures that were adopted and currently in place. If you have any questions about those or suggested changes, please let me know so we can get those adjustments made prior to making the recommendation in November. Also in the folder is the events calendar for November and December. There are a lot of things going on. We will try to keep you updated every week with a new calendar list, but we're adding to that regularly, and I know the campus principals are trying to get those things out there as much as we can. North is having their trunk retreat on Thursday, October 24th, at 5:00. The board is welcome to attend. We will have a booth set up, or a trunk set up, so that we can pass out some candy and see all the great people out there and enjoy a little bit of festivity. You see in the report, our enrollment numbers currently at 40, 34 as of this past Friday. Year-to-date attendance is at 94.67, and then you can see our enrollment trend there as well. I will in the future be putting a graph together to show our attendance rates and how they fluctuate throughout the year. Lastly is our events and upcoming events, so please let me know if you have any questions about anything that's been presented.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. I will now report on the continuing education hours for the Board of Trustees. Under State Board of Education rule, completing the required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. Per policy EBD legal, as board president, I'm required to announce the name of each member who either has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, or is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. I, Joel Odom, have exceeded the required continuing education training. Mrs. Lyanna Martinez has completed the required continuing education training. Ms. Bonner Reed has exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Jason Savoda is deficient in meeting the required continuing education training. Mr. Steven Schadrock has exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Marshall Flear has exceeded the required continuing education training. And Mr. Craig Moose has completed the required continuing education training. Now, Dr. Wade will give a report on the bilingual exception ESL waiver.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, board members. of our bilingual education and English as a second language. I'm going to try to speak a little bit louder. I'm a old horse today. Sorry about that. So you have many more detailed pieces of information in the board packet, but first, I just want to highlight, can you close that out there? Re-reverse that for me? You have to do the right one. You have to do the right one. So, in your packet, there was a report about the academic progress for our emergent bilinguals. So, I gave you a list of all the STAR results. Is that still where it is? Okay, there we go. Sorry. So, I just wanted, there's information in your packet for every grade level, every test, but I just wanted to point out a few at each campus. So, in fifth grade, this is the STAR approaches level for reading, math, and science, which you can see right here, compared to the state. So, I highlighted in green for you the areas where we are above the state. So, we are above the state in math, and I know that may seem surprising based on results we've shared previously, but for, this is just our emergent bilingual population. But then if I look at eighth grade, so eighth grade, they are tested in every subject, reading, math, science, and social studies. We are above the state in every area for the approaches level. At the high school, because of the five-by-five schedule, the students take, can take an EOC or an Of Course STAR test in either December or in the spring. So, there's two different administrations of that test. And I just wanted to show you, in the fall, we exceeded the state for every test. In the spring, we significantly exceeded per biology. Those scores were out of the roof anyway. Close on some of the others and then there's some areas that we need to make some improvement on. But just wanted you to have a highlight because there's a lot of data in your packet. The other thing to talk about is our students' progress on becoming proficient in English. So, every emergent bilingual or EB student must take what's called the TELPASS test. TELPASS stands for the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System. And it rates students on four different domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And then it scores them as either beginning, intermediate, advanced, or advanced high. So, I just pulled out for this presentation the advanced high because a composite score of all four of an advanced high qualifies a student with some other indicators I'll talk about in a minute to be dismissed as an emergent bilingual student. Like, you've gained the English language, you don't need any additional supports. So, again, I've highlighted for you in green where we are above the state in the advanced high category, okay? There's other categories, advanced, which is really good, they're making progress, but have they reached that pinnacle of being advanced high? So, I just want to point out, you're not going to see us above the state in K-2. Not every school district has a dual-language program like we have. So, at the, we are teaching both in Spanish and in English 50% of the time, so it takes a little while to gain proficiency in the English language. But you can see as, especially in the listening and speaking, where we are outperforming on the state, especially at the high school level. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and that falls into this, is the number of students who were reclassified. So, if a student has a composite score on that TELPASS test, composite means all four, kind of an average, of advanced high, and they score at least approaches on STAR in grades three through eight, they can be reclassified to say, you're no longer an emergent bilingual student. So, at last year, we had 21 students who were reclassified, all at the high school level. Two years ago, we had zero. So, kudos to the high school and their work with supporting our emergent bilingual students and having them progress. So, that's great news. The other thing I need to share is just professional learning that we do for emergent bilingual teachers. So, our dual-language teachers, this is our K through five teachers. Some of the things we did this past year, they attended the Title III Symposium. Title III is part of our title funding specifically for English emergent bilingual students. In addition to dual-language teachers, we also took other teachers from the high school and middle school, which is one of the reasons I think we've had some success with high school because they're getting some strategies to support those students in secondary. Our dual-language teachers participate in a professional learning community with our emergent bilingual program facilitator, Mr. Alejandro Guzman. They do that throughout the year. And then we also did some beginning-of-year ALPS training, English Language Proficiency Standards, which is what the TELPASS is grading students on for our secondary teachers. And then our, some of our K-1 teachers, and I'm not going to pronounce that because I will butcher that, but that translates as seats of learning is phonological awareness for our K-1 students in Spanish. So, that's just an overview of the evaluation of the program. But what I'm here to really discuss with you is the fact that we need to apply for an ESL, English as a Second Language Waiver. One of the things that we can do is if students, if teachers are not certified, then we can request a waiver from the state. We did not have to request one last year. A few years ago, when we had a bilingual program at middle school, we had to ask for a bilingual exception. But here's where we are right now. Last year, you can see the zeros, that's in the green, we had no students placed with a teacher that was not certified either with bilingual or English as a second language. We have quite a few students at high school, however, this year, emergent bilingual students, that wanted to take an advanced English class. And so, there is one teacher in each of those grade levels teaching an advanced English and they're not certified in ESL. So, we're going to request a waiver for those four teachers. Part of the process of requesting a waiver is we must set aside a certain percentage of the allotment we get for professional learning specifically for those teachers. So, here's what our plan is at this point, not just for them, but for all of our teachers supporting emergent bilinguals. Our dual-language teachers, we currently have three teachers involved in an intensive coaching cycle with Mr. Guzman. We plan to offer some coaching opportunities for those high school waiver teachers to make sure they have the strategies they need to support the emergent bilingual students. And then also, we will, teachers need, we're going to have, pay for them to take a review class so that they can test for that certification of English as a second language. We will pay for the class. Once they take the test and they add it to their certificate, we will also reimburse them for the cost of taking the test. So, we're trying to provide some support for that. We did an ESL prep class a couple of years ago in the summer and got some teachers certified, but those four teachers specifically is our target. We are also looking to bring someone in. The next district PD day in January, if we can make it work, maybe in April, to do some content-based language instruction. That's something that the Texas Education Agency is supporting. And we're, again, going to invite some staff to attend that Title III Symposium because they've been getting great strategies to support our EB students. So, that's the end of the presentation and notification that we are going to request a waiver. Are there any questions?
When are we looking to request that, Detective?
It has to be submitted by November the 1st. So, the board does not have to approve the waiver. Dr. Gilstrap has to approve the waiver, but we've always notified the board when we have, and we're required to notify you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wade? Our last report is on the five-by-five schedule at the high school. Mr. Barrett, our principal will come and present that report.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Board of Trustees. So, my team and I wanted to come out tonight and share some information regarding the five-by-five, a quick report, some updates. We conducted some surveys, gathered some new information that we'd like to share with the school board. And part of this presentation, before we dive into it too deep, we'll kind of talk about how we got to the five-by-five in the first place, as well as why we're even conducting more surveys and digging into this a little bit. So, if you remember, about five years ago, we went through a strategic plan process, strategic plan 1.0, and we set aside some goals. Specifically, some of those goals were to ensure some innovative learning environments and there were some pieces about allowing kids to explore personal interests and establishing some portfolios. When we started to dig into implementing the five-by-five, we had these specific student benefits here that we were kind of gearing that towards. We were really looking at trying to increase student engagement, give them some time to complete assignments, some labs, remediation and extension, time for clubs, organizations, increase attendance, and lower the stress with homework. So, those are our anticipated outcomes with implementation of the five-by-five. That's going to be important as we start to dig into some of the survey results that we have received from parents as well as our teachers. So, when we implemented the five-by-five at the time, it made sense, given the current world that we were living in with education. It was really a good decision, looking at some of those pieces and trying to implement something that was innovative. However, after we've implemented the five-by-five, there have been some circumstance changes that have really kind of pointed out some things to us that wanted us to go back to the drawing board to collect some more information. Just to kind of highlight some of those, obviously, we had the big one where we had COVID. A lot of things shifted in education at that point. Specifically, mathematics, we started to see a lot of deficits in our mathematics and English scores across the state. There were just a lot of gaps in core content post-COVID. We had the implementation of House Bill 4545 from legislature, which required 15 to 30 hours of accelerated instruction when students fail those EOC tests. And the spirit of that law was to allow these kids to have some accelerated instruction prior to them retesting. With the five-by-five, just to kind of put that in perspective, they test in December, which means we're really striving to get these kids 15 to 30 hours of interventions prior to testing in December. We had an update, House Bill 3928 with dyslexia services, which really just created an additional focus on dyslexia and converting those students from 504 to special education and really diving into making sure that those kids are getting the interventions and supports that they need. We had the cleanup bill for House Bill 4545, which was 1416, which is where they really kind of honed in on if they failed the test multiple times, they have to have the 30 hours versus the 15 hours. And then lastly, we had STAR 2.0. STAR 2.0, when it rolled out, really included new question types, gearing away from those multiple-choice tests and really started to put in these heat maps and other things. The theory behind that is that these STAR 2.0 questions, they require extensive practice. They take a lot of repetitions for kids to get used to them, to be able to utilize them and be successful on that STAR test. All of these circumstances have impacted the way that we do instruction in the classroom and ultimately impacted the way that we operate, even on the five-by-five. And all of these were things that came out post-implementation of the five-by-five. In response to all of these circumstances, we went through the process of strategic plan 2.0. So, to highlight a couple of things from strategic plan 2.0. We updated some of our priorities and we noticed that coming back from COVID and coming back from some of these situations, that there was more need for mental health interventions. We presented some data at one of our meetings where we just see the amount of suicidal ideation, homicidal ideations across the state has really increased quite a bit, requiring a larger need for that social-emotional interventions to take place during the school day. We've noticed that there really needs to be some tiered instruction where we're going in and helping kids with math, language arts, based on the gaps that came out of the COVID years. And then focusing on balanced technology use and personalized learning. With Chromebooks and all of these things being deployed out post-COVID, we're really having to focus in on the way that we instruct in a new, modern classroom with the use of technology. And then focusing on getting these kids socially prepared. Obviously, there were a lot of social deficits and a lot of these laws and bills that were put into place were geared towards tackling some of these things. These are all pieces that will be included in our strategic plan 2.0. So, on to why we're conducting a survey. My predecessor did a really good job at polling the community, starting to gather some information about what parents and students and staff were thinking about the five-by-five at the time. And really gathered a lot of information. The next step in that process for me was to really dig into kind of the effectiveness of that. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to start to survey parents and students and community members. But also, when we engaged in the five-by-five, if you recall, we went into a cohort with about six other school districts that were seeking a new innovative model. And since that time, four of those, including the one that we modeled after Judson, have pulled out of the five-by-five. And so, I really wanted to look at the effectiveness of that and see, is this the best fit for our kids, for our teachers, for our community? And here's kind of some of the information that we got from Dr. Farnsworth's survey. And the big point up there at the top, we have some quotes there that's included in your board packet. At the time, 39.5% of all stakeholders, students, parents, as well as teachers, were in favor of exploring another option other than the five-by-five. So, about 40% said we could go ahead and start looking at other potential bell schedule options. So, some of the questions that we asked on our survey when we were gearing towards the effectiveness of the five-by-five. We asked questions about, are students able to keep up with the pacing in the five-by-five? Are students able to stay engaged for a full 90-minute class period? Are they able to receive the necessary interventions on the five-by-five? How are absences affecting them? And how has the five-by-five really affected academics? So, those are kind of some of the key questions that we pushed out to the community because we really wanted to ask, even though we may have liked it, is it really what's effective for our students? Is it really what's effective for instruction? So, the first question, 63% of our parents report that they agree or strongly agree that their student expresses being bored or frustrated during instruction. This question was really geared towards engagement. And when we look at engagement, all of our practices in the school state that when we walk into a classroom, we are seeking 80% or more engagement. 80% of our kids locked in, tuned in with what the teachers instruct. This particular question, when I actually dug into it with the students, why would you be bored? Why would you be frustrated in class? What it really boiled down to was a lack of engagement. They were bored because they just weren't engaged with the learning that was going on, or they were frustrated because the pacing was too fast, they couldn't keep up with it, so they were becoming disengaged. So, with this piece, this pacing aspect of it, if things are going too slow, they're bored too quickly, they were frustrated. And parents are stating that their kids are coming home, 63% of them are stating, they're struggling with the 90-minute period. Whether we're teaching too fast or too slow, they're struggling one way or the other. So, some of the quotes that are here, there's a handful of quotes there. I wanted to point out this one from a parent. "I believe the 90-minute instruction is adequate for learning. I think it's probably difficult for teachers to engage students for the full 90 minutes. I am also aware of the fact that some students struggle more than my student does." So, one thing that really kind of stood out to me with this parent comment is that they're recognizing their kid is flourishing in the five-by-five schedule, but they understand that it may not be what's best for all students. And there are some students who have some significant gaps and are really struggling with the concept of staying engaged for 90 minutes. They're also recognizing how it's weighing on the teachers, how it's really building some frustrations with the teachers as well. The next question, when we talked about engagement and we asked the parents about engagement in the class, 55.4% of parents disagreed or strongly disagreed that their students are engaged throughout the entirety of a 90-minute lesson. So, remember, we talked about looking for 80% of students being engaged and we have parents who are stating 55.4% of the students are not engaged. So, that was a critical piece for me. When we talk about learning, one of the things that I communicate to my staff, there are two things that require, that are required in a classroom for high levels of learning. Guaranteed Bible curriculum, which means, are we teaching the right thing? And student engagement. If you're teaching the right thing and kids are engaged, there's going to be high levels of learning. So, engagement is a critical piece of that. Quote right here from a parent, "I think it's too long of a class period just to keep the students engaged." So, they're recognizing that students are really struggling to stay focused in for that long. The next piece, interventions, and full transparency here, this question, when I asked this question out to the community, I asked, is there enough school, is there enough time built into the school day to provide interventions for all students? I could see how that question could be misinterpreted because they look at our school day, we're in school for a long period of time, there's plenty of time to build in interventions. So, this one potentially could have been my fault and bad question, but nevertheless, the facts are the facts. 81.4% of parents agree there is enough time built in for the interventions. If you look at some of the comments in your board packet, there is a parent that put a comment in there about their emergent bilingual student who is learning English and just stated that that kid is frustrated, is having a hard time keeping up, having a hard time because he's just not receiving the interventions that he needs in real time. One of the conflicts with that is with the five-by-five schedule, we can only offer flex period twice a week. If we offer flex period more than twice a week, we go three times a week, that becomes our predominant bell schedule and it starts to mess with some funding of our CTE courses. And so, that creates a real barrier for us, being able to provide some type of daily interventions like the middle school's able to do on a day-period day. And just, I kind of put down there in that bottom corner, some of the typical interventions that would be offered, if we could offer them daily. And we do offer these to an extent, but EB support, PED support, retester support, we're going to look at some data here in a minute and talk about the importance of that retester support, social skills, social emotional lessons, as well as just overall struggling learners, and then also clubs and organization time. Some of the comments in your board packet also talk about not having enough time for readings for clubs and organizations. If you recall that first slide when we said we wanted to implement the five-by-five, we wanted to implement it to offer interventions. We wanted to implement it to increase engagement and we wanted to implement it for clubs and organization time and then labs. And all four of those pieces are pieces that we're really struggling with now. And we've given the five-by-five a good run on trying to implement with fidelity. It's been four years and we're struggling with those pieces still. So, one of the parent quotes right here, this is the one that I was mentioning to you, "I think it's a good time to get meaningful learning, but in my case, my son doesn't speak English and he often feels lost and frustrated." This is a parent saying their kid needs help. So, now let's shift gears and let's talk about what teachers are saying. We looked at what the parents are stating and when I read through all of the comments on there, the key piece that I kept seeing was that parents are genuinely concerned about engagement in the classroom, that they're seeing that there's an engagement issue kind of across the board and that's a real concern for them. Now, what are teachers saying? 53.8% of teachers disagree or strongly disagree that students are actively engaged for the 90-minute block. So, again, about half of the teachers. So again, about half of the teachers are stating kids aren't staying engaged. Now, take into consideration, we have some of our core content teachers who also took the survey. So if you're in a lab for 90 minutes, that can be effective for those CTE courses. Those CTE courses, the 90 minutes is really effective for them being in the shop for 90 minutes, working on auto. Key with that is we could double block those classes if need be, so they could still have that 90 minutes. So some of the teacher quotes, again, there's a lot of teacher quotes in the packet, but it benefits the CTE pathways. It gives our kids a larger amount of time to engage in their career-based activities. I think that's a key piece. The CTE department, they love the 90 minutes. Our core content teachers state that they're struggling. And that's ultimately what came from the teacher side of the survey when we talked about engagement. So real quick, the data. I know these scales are kind of hard to see. Just to point out, the one on the left is going to be our first-time testers. The one on the right is going to be everyone, which is going to include our retesters. Be careful with the scales because the way that they're formatted, one of them is on a 100-point scale, the other's on an 80-point scale. So the scale on the right is actually lower than the one on the left, even though it looks a little bit higher. With this, what we're seeing here over the last five years is we see a little bit of a dip in some of our scores. And specifically, when we start to factor in some of those retesters, we see a pretty significant dip across the board. Again, what this is telling me is that there's a need for intervention for those retesters. Those kids that failed the first time, they need to retake that assessment. They need some additional help. They need some additional interventions. Also, I'm going to talk about the Meets and Masters here in a little bit because one of the pieces of going to the five-by-five was the idea was for them to engage in the content, be able to go deeper into the content, for them to have a deeper understanding of what they're learning. And we'll talk about that once we get through these results. EOC biology. Biology honestly looks really good last year. If we look at our first-time testers and even our retesters, they're pretty much through the roof. We had phenomenal teachers in biology last year. Ms. Rosine is now teaching physics for us and we have two new biology teachers. We're still hoping for those same results, but that big increase right there last year for biology, have to give credit where credit is due and that's definitely Ms. Rosine. English one results. So we look at English one. We saw a little bit of increase last year and we're slowly starting to build back up. We're still not to where we were 2017, 2018 year, 2018, 2019 year. And then obviously, we have the 21 dip after COVID and after a lot of the different circumstances that I pointed out at the beginning of the slideshow. English two, same concept. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a little bit of a bump. Nothing substantial yet, just probably about an 8% increase when we look at our first-time testers. Again, our retesters over there is still showing that we're struggling. And US history, we've remained pretty stagnant kind of across the board. We really haven't grown much, haven't dropped much, grown just a couple of points here and there. So the overall summary of the data is that we really anticipated a deeper dive into it with the 90-minute period. Typically, where you would then see results are in those Meets and Masters category. If you're able to go deeper into the content, extend that learning, then you would usually expect to see those results on the Meets and Masters. However, I strongly believe that our lack of engagement is kind of a barrier for us there. That's really created a barrier where we haven't reaped a lot of those results in that Meets and Masters area in those core content pieces. Couple of other important facts because I've ran a few of the numbers just to kind of help summarize a lot of this presentation. I asked parents, and the question was just very kind of a blanket question. Do you feel there needs to be a change in the way that we instruct? Do you feel that there needs to be a change in our instruction? And 67.4% of parents state that there is some need and a change in instruction. Now, whether that's the five-by-five, basically what they were pointing at with this particular question is we need to have more engagement. We need to find a way to engage kids better. Asked our teachers, would you like us to explore other options other than the five-by-five? And almost 70% of our teachers said, yes, we really need to explore other options. Because the feedback that I'm getting from teachers is that they are struggling to plan engaging activities for a full 90 minutes and to maintain engagement with students. That in the core content, it's too much information. It's too fast. We're overloading them in math and language arts and the kids are struggling to stay engaged. I have a teacher comment where it says, by the time their fifth-period class rolls in and they're trying to teach math for 90 minutes in the fifth period, that kids are completely checked out, disengaged. It's tough. Teachers are really struggling to maintain that specifically in the core content areas. I ran some numbers down there at the bottom because one of the big questions is, if we did consider another option, is it going to cost us more money? Are we going to need more teachers, right? That's a big question. The numbers that I ran down here for the five-by-five schedule, we have 1,245 kids based on last year's. We could offer 40.8 sections any given period of the day, which resulted in an average class size of 30.51. Our CTE teachers' number-one issue is their class size. Plus, they're at the scene and kids not being able to get into the electives that they need to get into or want to get into because they're full. And there's not a lot of flexibility in the five-by-five. So if the one period that they have available to get into that elective is full, it's really kind of putting a crunch on them to take that pathway later. It specifically creates some issues with our FFA ag program because if you know you have to be in an ag class to show and we're running out of ag classes before those kids are graduating for them to take. So that's creating a real issue for us. But if you look at the eight-period day down there, we can offer 3.3 sections more each particular class period, which actually would reduce our class size by about two students, down to 28.4. So what that means is if we shifted away from the five-by-five to an eight-period day, we could do it without adding additional teacher spots, without adding additional FTEs. We would have to be really strategic in how we planned our master schedule, but based on these numbers, it's plausible to do. And that's with double blocking some of our practical courses for CTEs so they can still get that 90-minute shop time that they state that they absolutely need. And I honestly agree with them. They need that time in the shop. So conclusion, I went over most of these. I think the most important one is down there. It's the second one on the bottom. That majority of parents and teachers agree we need some change in instruction. And our teachers who are experts in the field state that they need to be able to engage students better. And our core content teachers think that they can do that more effectively in something outside of the 90-minute block. Comments, questions?
It's a great analysis. That's good stuff.
So what's really prompting this is obviously the discussion about the five-by-five and some of the concerns that it presents. From scheduling to class engagement, student engagement, teacher engagement. Some of our students, you know, whenever we implemented it, it was, hey, they'll be able to do this track and then they'll be able to do this track also with this number of courses we're offering. Kids aren't doing that. They're graduating early. You know, they're choosing other routes, choosing other things. And so it's a tough decision to make. This is how we wanted to go about doing it. Whenever Mr. Barrett asked about, you know, hey, can we look at this? I said, yes, we need to get some feedback from folks because this will be a big decision. Kids that are doing great in the past, they're doing great on the five-by-five and I like it. Some of our students that were struggling in the past, they seem to be struggling a little bit more now. And we've got to make decisions in the best interest of all the kids. So this is a tough decision to make. We haven't made that decision yet and we just wanted to give you some information to the board about kind of what's prompting this and what some of the information is telling us. Data as well as feedback, so.
How's that going to affect the bus routes?
That would be something we would have to look at and consider. We would have to see kind of transportation, how that's going to affect. Right now, with our eight-period, if we went to an eight-period day, we would be able to work approximately 48 to 50-minute classes and still maintain the same bell schedule, which would not affect our bus routes. If we looked at a reduction in minutes or anything like that, obviously, then we would have to look at transportation.
I knew we had some issues with this five-by-five. It seems to be growing, but I didn't realize we're to that point already. That's staggering numbers.
Yes, sir.
It's either the ones that really progress and went in and it's working. We have the other students are finding struggles. More struggles, right?
Yes, ma'am, you're absolutely right.
And this was really an innovative idea. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I heard about it whenever I was getting here and whenever I got here, I was really interested in seeing it. It is an innovative idea. Sometimes you've got to step back from innovation and go, okay, is it working or not? You need to go another direction. We tried that. We need to look at another option. So thank you, Mr. Barrett. Great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Barrett. Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda. Dr. Gilstrap?
I guess, board members, included in the consent agenda are the typical items. One addition is a out-of-state student travel. This is for, I believe it's Tyler Billings. Is it Tyler? I think it is Tyler. Tyler Billings going to the tractor show, a tractor restoration contest in Indianapolis, Indiana, for the National FFA Convention. So that's the only addition. If there's no questions, administration recommends board approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have motion to accept the administration recommendation. Okay, Mr. Billings, makes a motion. Mr. Blair, second. Any further discussion or questions? If there are none, that being known by raising your hand, if you support this administration recommendation. Anyone opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Our next item is to consider approval of the District 2425 financial audit by Ms. Anglin.
Good evening, Dr. Odom. I'm Dr. Gilstrap, members of the board. This evening, I have Derek Walker, a partner with Coleman Horton and Company here to discuss our 2324 audit that must be approved by the board by November 27 of this year and submitted to TEA. So I will turn it over to Derek.
It's a delightful reading.
Yeah, oh, yes, because you can't sleep.
That's it? Oh, perfect, perfect. Well, I have to ask, y'all want the 90-minute or the 5-minute? 5-minute?
It's there, it's not mine.
Perfect, good deal. So thank you for having me tonight. Here to present the audit for the period dated June 30, 2024. There's a couple of things in this audit. We try to get these out to y'all early, so if y'all want to review them, perfect. You know, they're good reading material tonight, as you spoke of. But try to get them out just in case y'all have any questions. But other than that, I'm just going to go over a couple of our opinion letters and then some fund balance numbers and through some budget numbers. So if you'll turn to page four. These opinion letters in here, the only thing in here that's ours. The rest of this is the district's information. It's your fund balance, your numbers, it's budget, et cetera. But this is the only thing that we, you know, give an opinion on. This main page, on page four, is our main opinion letter. And it briefly states that we audited the district's financial statements. We did so using accounting standards generally accepted in the United States of America. And what it goes on to state, you know, there's a lot of legal jargon in here, but it briefly states that the district, in our opinion, we believe that the district's financial statements present fairly in all material respects. This is also known as an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. And this is the highest level of assurance that auditor can give on a set of financial statements. There are two other reports. So when a district receives federal funds, it has to have an audit on its internal controls and compliance. And then when a district receives over $750,000 in federal funds, it has to have an audit on its major federal programs. Both of those were unmodified or clean opinions. So congratulations to the district in that regard. One of these schedules I like to go over in this audit report is on page 19. This is the fund balance. This is the fund balance, kind of want to touch base with y'all on that. So this in essence is your profit and loss or your income statement for the year. It presents your revenues up top, your expenses, it gives you the change in fund balance, which is that third line from the bottom, shows you your beginning fund balance and what your ending residual fund balance is. So the first column's your general fund, this is always a major fund, always presented separately. This is your main operating account, with the majority of your taxes come in, the majority of your state revenue comes in, and majority of your expenses are paid in. So looking at that column, just want to go over a couple of numbers, your total revenues were just under forty million in your general fund. Total expenses were forty million, three sixty-six. And looking at your change in fund balance, it was a decrease of five hundred and forty-one thousand. So I think we're on our, we're auditing our tenth school right now, and there's only been one district that's had an increase in fund balance. So it's been a rough, you know, not, not rough, but it's just, it's, the money's not coming in to meet the expenses, so. And actually, that is actually a very low decrease that we've seen across the board. You know, we're seeing millions and millions, you know, that they're spending during the year for this general fund. So, so a decrease of five forty-one, that leaves your, your general fund balance at eleven million, three twenty-five. Your debt service fund, which is also shown as major, just looking at the bottom three pages from, three lines from the bottom, that increased a little over one million dollars, leaving it within any fund balance of seven point two million. Your other funds, we all lumped together, this is your child nutrition, your Title One, your campus activity funds, et cetera, they get all lumped here, there's, they're listed out in detail in the schedule in the back. But those other funds decreased forty-seven thousand, three hundred, leaving them within any fund balance of one million, nine thirty-six. So overall, for the district, that far-right column, three lines from the bottom, total fund balance increased five hundred, five hundred thousand, leaving the district with a twenty point five million dollar fund balance. I want to review the budgetary schedule with y'all, y'all flip to page fifty-six. So this, this is your budget for your general fund. In these columns, your original columns, the first column is the budget y'all present before the start of the new year, and I'm sure y'all have budget amendments all during, during the months. That second column's your final amended budget, third column's your actual amounts, and the fourth column's the variance between what was spent and what was budgeted. So looking at your total revenues, four lines from the bottom, total revenues came in three-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, more than what was anticipated. Local revenue, which is your property taxes, any kind of missed lines, athletic receipts, et cetera, they were up two hundred and forty-three thousand. State program revenue was up seventy-seven thousand, and federal revenue was up seventy-five thousand. Coming down about three-quarters of the page, your total expense, expenses, expenditures were a hundred and thirty thousand more than what was budgeted. I wanted to explain that a little bit because we ran into two instances where we had to propose a journal entry. One was those buses y'all received from Pecos, right? So we had to get those on the books, we had to show it as a resource and also show it as an expense, according to accounting standards. So in essence, if you'll see that over expenditure in function thirty-four, there's a negative amount in that far-right column of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, that was a result of us having to record that entry.
And that's the approximate value on those vehicles?
Uh, I think it was...
About a hundred and eighty?
Yes. Yeah, y'all had a little bit of wiggle room in there, but then when that came up, we had to... Same thing with your copiers and leases, y'all entered into a new copier lease over this past year, and we had to book the value or the cost of those copiers, and also the resources from that debt, and that over expended your function eleven, which is at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Other than that, I mean, y'all use that budget as a true, you know, I think your district, yeah, there's no wiggle room, you know, y'all, y'all really use that budgeting as a tool, you know. Where y'all have fund balance, where some people would build, you know, an excess budget, y'all are actually using it as a good financial tool, so. But other than that, there were no compliance other issues that were required to report to you or to TEA or to the feds, it was a clean audit, we always enjoy coming down here, it's a little far, but... I was coming that back road, I guess through Pleasanton, that road's only 55 miles an hour. We dove it out here. Well, we appreciate it, and if y'all ever do come across any questions or anything during the year, have any issues, we don't like surprises, so if anything new comes up, y'all refund some bonds, you know, or something like that, issue some new bonds, or y'all have a, some, some vehicles transferred during the year, please give us a call and see if we can assist with it.
That was new for all of us.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was.
They had several questions. You mean, how did you get these?
Yes. They just gave them to you.
Yeah, you can't see the box.
We didn't research where Pecos was or wherever it was. So, y'all don't forget, if y'all approve this audit tonight, there's that certificate of board, I think it's pitched through, I think Lindsay has a copy of it. We'll need that signed in order to submit this to TEA and to the feds.
Any questions? If there are none, administration recommends the board approve the twenty-three, twenty-four audit as presented by Coleman Horton and Company.
I make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Mr. Reed seconded. Do we have any further questions? All in favor of accepting administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Anyone opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anglin, very much, to you and the business office, everything you do all year to keep transparent, keep everything where it needs to be, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now consider approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six instructional materials committee by Dr. White.
Good evening again. The board is required to approve the instructional materials committee, and included in your packet are the names of the staff members for a couple of committees this year on reading language arts and phonics and math adoptions. There's been a new process adopted as a result of House Bill sixteen oh four of reviewing materials, so there are no new TEES being proposed that we know of right now, but we had a gap year for math materials, so we contracted for the four years of a gap, and so now they're saying there's going to be new materials, and so the State Board of Education is scheduled to release their approved materials sometime in December, and so we're going to pull the committees together to review those like we always do. So are there any questions? If not, administration recommends the board approve the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five instructional material adoption committee membership as presented.
Motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Mr. Shawrock makes the motion, and Mr. Voto seconded. All right, any further questions? There are none. All in favor of accepting administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Anyone opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you.
Last, we will consider approval of action item number five D, consider approval of contract employment.
Board members, we do have a contract recommendation for a high school principal, or excuse me, a high school principal. We have a contract recommendation for a high school counselor, which was recommended by the principal. Jacqueline Santos, she is currently in Laredo, is that correct, Laredo ISP? Family is relocating to San Antonio area, and Laredo being the size of district they are, they agreed to release the contract and things like that. So she is ready to go, ready to get on board, and I know the high school counseling team and the administrative team are really looking forward to getting that additional support. So if there's no questions, administration recommends the board approve the contract employment as recommended.
Motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
Yes, I'll throw down, makes the motion, and second, Mr. Boots. Any further questions or discussion? Accepting administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. We have now concluded our agenda for this meeting, as either via the further business. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two PM. Thank you.